Other disturbance moving through the area tonight and Thursday morning.
Hello.
Okay. I would like to call the order that Wednesday, April 12th, 2017, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with approval of the minutes of March 22nd. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions?
I move for approval.
Okay. Second. Okay. So, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Moving on, is there any, to item three, is there any correspondence from staff?
Uh, nothing from staff this evening.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Other than we had a few training sessions this week, if some of you were able to, I know some of you were able to attend, that would be, I guess, okay. So, item four, Transportation Division meeting report from Joel.
The last meeting of the Transportation Commission was canceled. The next meeting will be tomorrow afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 in this room. The agenda's posted.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. We have reached the point in our agenda, item five, which is called "Open Microphone", and it's an opportunity for anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the commission about matters that aren't currently on our agenda or pending before us. If there's something on your mind that has nothing to do with our current agenda, anybody, any takers on that? Nope? Okay. Well, just take note, it's an opportunity for the future. Victoria sometimes comes up and tells us about things that we should know about, and others too. Okay. So, we're at, item six, preliminary development review for 201 West Sixth Street, the Sangria Development, and Mike's gonna give a presentation first.
So, I believe this is our first preliminary development review in Legacy Crossing, so first project is Sangria Development, and they're proposing a mixed-use project at 201 West Sixth Street. It's that southwest corner of Sixth and Jackson. We'll be carving off a smaller triangle from the larger square piece. It's Sangria Development, about a 14,000-square-foot building. First floor is proposed to have some restaurants, predominantly restaurant with a little bit of retail space in the northwest corner. Second, third floors, planning on having strictly residential, so there'll be nine studio loft apartments, as well as a one-two-bedroom loft apartment on the second and third floors. Also included is an outdoor deck area, so a roof deck coming off of the second floor that has some planters and just outdoor space on that floor. So, this is the property currently owned by the Urban Renewal Agency, southwest corner of Sixth and Jackson. You've got Jackson running north to south here, and then Sixth Street adjacent to the property to the north. This is University Point, mixed-use development here to the west, Anderson Silos, and then the current location of Crite's Agricultural Use there to the south, and the Ale House and Jimmy John's. This is an older photo, so it does show Jimmy John's on there. So, just wanted to go through the Legacy Crossing, so since we haven't had one of these before, we have three aspects to this project as far as city regulations. So, the underlying zoning district is the urban mixed-commercial zone, so that really regulates the uses, as well as your setback requirements and lot area, lot size requirements, limitations on use within that zone. And that zone is currently encompassing all of the Legacy Crossing area, south of Sixth Street to the north, then you have Jackson to the east, Paradise Creek to the west, and then Highway 95 to the south. And then you have Legacy Crossing Overlay District, so it's not an actual zoning district, it's an overlay zone, and that really is the mechanism to create a review process for the design guidelines within the Legacy Crossing area, so creates that mechanism for implementing the design guidelines, and it also creates a review process, and that's what we're going through now. The design guidelines are a document that's really intended to make sure redevelopment's consistent with the community's vision of the area, so that was approved in 2012, and really just, you know, the community had this broad vision of what Legacy Crossing needed to develop into, and, you know, the area between university and downtown, and in order to do that, you know, reflect the community's vision, the design guidelines were created and then adopted by council. So, this is the area we're talking about with Legacy Crossing outlined in the blue outline here, so that would be Jackson here to the east, Sixth Street, Paradise Creek between the university, and then 95 there. So, this is just a paragraph from the design guidelines about the reasons why Legacy Crossing is so unique and the certain things that are needed within the design guidelines in order to preserve and enhance that area between downtown and the university. We go on to say in the second paragraph, you know, we go through and how this relates to the city's existing zoning code, the guidelines, and are intended to be utilized by city staff, the commission, and city council. City council only reviews these projects if they should be appealed to the council from the commission. And then, you know, these are passed by resolution, so it's like a comp plan, you know, there isn't strict adherence, there's more just general adherence to the guidelines, there is the ability to deviate from minor aspects of certain projects when they're justified by the commission, so that was just kind of encompassed in that last paragraph. So, going over the review process, initially you have a pre-application meeting, and that's an opportunity for the applicant to come in and present their project and pass that around different city departments and identify, really, any deficiencies in the project or any substantial deviations that need to be made, fire lanes, fire access, setbacks, mainly just those issues that could have a substantial impact on development. So, the applicant's gone through that process and received some feedback, and now they're at the preliminary Legacy Crossing Overlay Development Review stage, and part of that is they submit their package, we send it out for public comment period, so we publish that in the newspaper, and it's posted on-site, and that runs for 15 days, and it's really just an opportunity to provide written comment to the commission. So, we take all the comment that's received during that period, and then we include it in your packet. I think there's one letter from Ms. Chaney that was included in your packet tonight. And the period that we noticed this for public comment was March 18th of this year through April 3rd. And then, so we're here, and this is being reviewed as the commission as a regular agenda item. Really, the opportunity for public comment is during that public comment period, and this isn't a public hearing, it's just a regular agenda item, although the public is, you know, more than welcome. Obviously, the applicant will get up and make a statement or a presentation, and then anybody else that would like to speak is certainly welcome too. And really, we're looking at evaluating the conformance of the proposal with the design guidelines, and that's really the commission's role within the design guidelines, is to review the project and make sure it's consistent with the guidelines. So, the commission has three actions that are stated within the code: approve the proposed development, approve subject to required modifications or conditions, and then deny the development proposal. And then, once the preliminary review is completed, if there's any modification that needs to be made, there'll be an opportunity to come back, there'll be a final review that'll happen in a couple meetings, and we'll have the opportunity, the applicant can make some changes if there are any required. If they're not, then we just basically schedule this for the final review, and we bring it back to the commission just to get the final approval. So, this is the site plan that was submitted. You can see Sixth Street here. You can vaguely see the current curb line of Sixth Street. So, right now, if, I'm sure most of you are aware, you have the east-west bound lanes here that are at odds with each other, they're not aligned, so you're looking at, you know, going straight, and then you need to veer off to the right there in order to miss the left-hand turn heading south onto Jackson Street. So, part of this is a shifting of the curb line and the sidewalk, and so this is the existing curb line, and it'll be shifted to the south to have a wide and dedicated right-turn lane, and you'll have the bike lane, as well as the eastbound lane, more aligned with the lanes across Jackson Street to the east, so that'll be a big improvement as part of this project. We've got, in the design guidelines, there are requirements for a certain look on the street improvements, so the tree lawn area, this is brick pavers, and then you have the widened sidewalk here, these are all tree wells with trees in them, historic light fixtures, and that's just specified in the design guidelines for the streetscape design. This would be Hallow Walk, you've got a short plaza area here on the corner, gonna end up bulbing out the intersection in order to provide a better pedestrian crossing there, shorten the crossing a little bit. And then you've got the Hallow Walk extension, so if you recall, we had the vision to extend Hallow Walk, which currently runs up admin building, the green there, and accesses the admin building through campus, and the intent there was to provide this connection that wasn't on a street sidewalk or a street, but to provide this connection between downtown and the university through Legacy Crossing District, and so they've included the Hallow Walk corridor there. We'll talk a little bit more in detail on that, as far as the width of that is just shy, but we'll discuss that a little bit later. They have a, I think a seven-stall parking lot, which is accessed off of Sixth Street. This would be the footprint of the building, so there's a portion adjacent to Hallow Walk, you've got the portion adjacent to Sixth Street. There'll be some entry feature here with an art piece incorporated into the building design right there at that intersection. We've got an outdoor patio for the restaurant space to the south. This would be a sidewalk connecting the parking with the sidewalk. This'll eventually need to tie into Hallow Walk. You have some bicycle parking area in this location right here, and then this would just be parking lot landscaping, so they're required to have five-foot buffers adjacent to the parking lot to the north and to the south, and then have shrubs every four feet on center, as well as one tree within those areas, so they've shown that there, and they've also identified that part of their stormwater management plan is gonna be directing the roof drainage from the building into filtera boxes here, which would be partly absorbed into the ground before they reach the storm sewer system. And I would note that, you know, this area down here is still subject to any other development that occurs on this site, so this would be a remnant triangle that could see another project placed on there, and, you know, we'll try as much as possible to get some cross-access through there, and so they've just extended Hallow Walk. Really, the property boundary for this project ends right here, and then the URA is tasked with completing the improvements of Hallow Walk, and so they're planning on doing that. And so, it's a little bit up in the air right now as to how we're gonna end up completing the path, you know, Hallow Walk through this area, as well as bringing a drive aisle through the south side, and how that's gonna align with another project to the south, and so that will probably change slightly in the future. Obviously, you can't go through trees with your travel aisle, so we'll need to figure out that one aspect of this project. One thing that may change from preliminary stage where we're at right now and final is gonna be the dumpster location, and so I think that there's an issue just with the radius, you know, they need to get a garbage truck in there to serve the dumpster, and so that's likely to shift, you know, probably move the ADA space to the north and replace the dumpster with the ADA space, and then shift the dumpster down into this area and widen out the landscape island, and then have the dumpster at an angle so the trucks can go in there and service it, and so that'll be a slight change that we'll probably see incorporated on the final, final stage. So, these are the conceptual elevations that were submitted, so this is on Sixth, almost on the Jimmy John's corner, looking southwest to the development, so this would be the entry feature, which is covered with an metal awning. These metal awnings extend essentially all the way around the building, except for that western side. This would be their public artwork that's incorporated into the feature here, adjacent to the Hallow Walk Plaza. You can see this would be a 24-foot-tall portion of the restaurant area, and then you transition into the restaurant on the ground floor, and this would be retail space over here in the far west, and then these would be the apartments up here on the second, third floors with a roof deck on top of the current restaurant space there. This is a view looking from, really, the Anderson property to the northwest, and you can see Hallow Walk that goes through, and they've got the outdoor seating area, set all those metal awnings, you know, large vertical windows. You've got quite a bit, quite a bit of windows here on the restaurant side, and then you can see the entrance area there. These are the floor plans that were submitted, so this is gonna be the first floor, looking at the entrance, you've got the art feature here. This is going to the north, this is that small retail space in the northwest corner, you've got stair corridors here and here, as well as an elevator corridor there, and then just multiple entrances to the building. One of the retail space, you've got a service entrance here on the west side of the building, entries to the residence areas via the stairwell, as well as the elevator, and then the main entrance is on that intersection of Sixth and Jackson. This is the second floor, so you see the 10 apartments, and so they all have internal stairs within them, they go up to second-floor loft space. This would be the outdoor area, which is accessed via this corridor here, and so it's a, you know, rather large outdoor gathering area. This shows the third floor with the loft space on the apartments. I believe this unit was the one that had two bedrooms as part of it, but you can see the stairs going up, and then there'll be a loft bedroom up there on that second, second level of the apartment. So, these are the building elevations. This is gonna be the south elevation, looking to the north, and this is gonna be the north elevation, looking to the south from Sixth Street. So, you notice, you know, part of the requirements is building materials, they've incorporated some brick masonry, as well as cement block, some vertical hardy siding here, and then heavy cornices to the north, or on top of the building, and then these metal awnings with these large vertical windows. Required to have 20% openings, as far as windows on, adjacent to streets or the Hallow Walk, and they're coming in, I believe, around 35% on these top floors. Ground floor's coming in at about 50%, which is the requirement for ground floor adjacent to streets or Hallow Walk. This is the west side of the building, so really just serving as the service entrance portion of the building. This is the service entry door. Not exactly sure what this is, I thought it may be a mural location at some point, but we could certainly ask the applicant to clarify what that is. And then this is looking from Sixth and Jackson, looking west, you have the entrance, and then you have the building, which is angled to accommodate for Hallow Walk heading down to the southwest. So, taking a look at our plans within the design guidelines for Hallow Walk, you can see it was this major corridor extending from Sixth and Jackson, eventually tying in with a pathway at the university. It's anticipated that at some point there could be a crossing over the creek at this location, and then it would tie into, I believe that's maybe Narrow Street there, and then eventually on to the admin, admin campus. So, the Hallow Walk detail, and so they essentially match the detail to a T. One point is, this is shown at 28 feet wide. URA, you know, working with staff and the applicant, ended up proposing 24 feet for this location, mainly because just the, how much space it takes up on that parcel. So, you're going, you know, at an angle, ends up dividing the buildable area into two triangular-shaped parcels, and becomes more of a challenge on this parcel than it may for other locations once you start to open up into these large parcels where they could pretty easily accommodate that and end up with some type of, you know, triangular, or not triangular, but rectangular-shaped lot on those pieces. And so, that's why I think, you know, staff's comfortable with them going down, still meeting all the detail, but going, reducing that by about four feet, just because of the, kind of the constraints that it creates with the buildable portions of that site. So, just showing what they've done, pretty much matching the detail, so they've got all the trees spaced out to the appropriate length, we've got the historic lights there as well, and then, but it is only 24 feet wide instead of the required 28, which is still, you know, you look at it on the, on the property, and it's still fairly substantial, you know, on the ground there. So, I just wanted to, you know, quickly go through all of the design guidelines, and I've just, you know, for your ease of review, just broken those down into table format, and, but we can certainly pull the guidelines up and take a look at them if you want. First thing we look at is building placement to make sure that it's up to the property line, and so it is, you know, within five feet for the majority of the property, adjacent to Sixth Street, as well as right up against Hallow Walk there to the southeast. And then the height of it, it has to be a minimum of 20 feet or two stories, lowest portion is 23 feet, maximum 60, and the highest portion is 47, so it meets all those requirements. And then general facade guidelines, so it has to have a number of transparent window openings, can't have any blank walls, there has to be a, kind of a distinction between the floors on all facades, and should include solid surfaces, window openings, avoid creation of blank walls, so getting to that, that blank wall issue, and then rear and side facade should be designed so that they're similar to the rest of the facades that are adjacent to streets or pedestrian ways, but they just need to be, they don't have, need to have as much detail, they could be just similar and more general in appearance. Then the window openings, you know, I'm sure a lot of the commissioners are familiar with this one, 'cause we had worked on this one about two years ago after we had done some review of some projects and identified that 50% is actually quite a bit of window openings on those ground floors, and if you look at these elevations, I think you probably noticed that, is it looks like a whole lot of glass, and it, you know, really good details on that incorporation of the window openings, but, you know, they're coming in at pretty much right at the minimum 50% on the ground floor, so, you know, that's maybe one thing to monitor in the future, whether or not we need to adjust that, but they do meet this requirement, they're pretty much at 50% on the south and the north facades, and then they have the east facade where the main entrance is, they're coming in at about 50, 56%, so they're a little over there. It goes on for transparent glass, you know, mirror tinted glass, or discouraged, and then all those floors above the ground floor have to have at least 20% openings. This is 36% on the second, third floors on the north and south facades, so those well exceed the 20% requirement. The next section addresses projecting facade elements and states that it should be in keeping with historic architecture within the community, including awnings and marquees. You know, I think it's staff's opinion it does, there's a lot of brick work, metal awnings, heavy roof cornices, and, you know, I would say that that's pretty consistent with a lot of things in the downtown core. And then where buildings are adjacent to public streets or pedestrian ways, 75% of the facade should contain projecting facade elements, so that's, you know, the awnings that are coming out. So, looking at the north facade, they have 75% of those metal awnings that cover the sidewalk. East facade contains 93%, and the southern, just the southern portion adjacent to Hallow Walk comes in at about 95%. They have facade articulation, so that's met, building materials, they have a list of materials that are encouraged and ones that are discouraged. All the materials that they've identified meet those building material requirements for the ones that they, we do encourage. Required off-street parking, they have some reduction, so with an urban mixed-commercial, we don't have any parking requirements for commercial, so any retail or restaurant uses, there are no parking requirements. Really, the only parking requirement for this project is gonna be the residential, and that's half of what you would normally have within another zoning district, and so, you know, per that calculation, seven are required, and they've provided seven in the parking lot adjacent to the west there. And then there's certain aspects of how the off-site or off-street parking is placed on the lot. We're looking for parking lots that are to the side or the rear of development, so the building can be up against the street. This meets all those requirements, 'cause the parking is in between University Point and the Sangria Development, so it's on the side of the project, and so, you know, it would meet all the location requirements for parking lots in the zone. And then, this doesn't apply, podium parking, don't have podium, and we don't have joint use within here either. They meet all the landscape requirements, so we talked about the five-foot landscape buffer with the shrubs every four feet on center, and then you have the tree in there as well, and so they have at least five feet on those buffers to the north and the south, and they have all the plantings that are required in there as well. This doesn't apply, 'cause there's no parking structure as part of this project. Within the guidelines, they identify key public spaces, and one of the key public spaces is that intersection, southwest corner of Sixth and Jackson. So, we have the plaza area that's been incorporated with Hallow Walk, and you also have the art piece that's directly adjacent to that, and so as part of this project, you know, we believe that they meet that, that requirement with those features and the plaza with Hallow Walk. And then part of that is public art integration, so they've incorporated that piece of metal art there on that corner, and so we would say that they contribute to the public art in that location, and that satisfies that requirement. Looking at their stormwater management plan, that's part of the requirements here, is to provide some type of management plan as part of the development, and they're proposing to use some filtera boxes that are located in tree wells in order to absorb some of that stormwater into the ground before it's conveyed to the stormwater detention system. So, they'll be doing that. I think there's gonna also be some garden locations and planter boxes up there on the roof deck, which would be obviously watered with probably some drainage, and that would be their, their proposal. They also have a landscape swale in that southern landscape buffer, so that's a lot larger than the five, so they're gonna incorporate a swale within that area in order to maybe get a little bit of recirculation down into the ground from that, the stormwater. Public transit facilities, kinda hard to provide a, some type of bus stop at this location, just because of the proximity to the intersection, but what they are doing is part of the URA and the city's project of widening Sixth Street to the south and creating a wider right-hand turn lane, and so those are, you know, and orienting, you know, more aligning the east and the west-bound lanes at that intersection to provide just a safer intersection in general, so, you know, I think that that really is the opportunity at this site, is to increase the width of Sixth in order to get that a lot safer than it is, as well as reducing the walking distance with the bulbouts, so that'll be part of the project there. Bicycle parking facilities, so we do require bicycle parking as part of developments within Legacy Crossing. 11 spaces are required, and 13 are shown on the plans, and then they have to be, you know, meet dimensional requirements. And as far as I could tell, scaling out the drawings, they meet all the two-feet-by-six-feet parking requirements, so all those spaces meet that, and then there needs to be a access between the bicycle parking and the entrance, so they have that wide, eight-foot-wide sidewalk that runs right along the bicycle parking that leads right to the main entrance for the apartments, as well as leads out to the retail entrance and the restaurant entrance, so they are providing that connection. So, they are providing that connection. So, you know, just upon staff's review, we believe that it's, you know, in substantial conformance with the guidelines, and we recommend approval of the proposed development. And I'd certainly be able to try to answer any questions you had or cover anything.
I have, I have a couple of questions. One being the west facade treatment, because it's pretty blank, and I'm just wondering how that aligns with the design guidelines on the upper floors in particular, where there is an opportunity to maybe wrap around with that two-bedroom unit or whatever. It seems like, it's pretty blank.
Yeah.
That would be, I mean, I think that the project in general is wonderful, that's just something that spoke to me a little bit there, so.
And we had a discussion about that, you know, with the 20% requirement. I don't think it's completely clear within the guidelines about whether or not you get exemptions for, you know, because in the beginning, we talk about if they're adjacent to public street or pedestrian ways, then you have these, you know, larger requirements for the ground floor, and then you've got the 20% above. You know, it, I think the original intention was that the facades that are adjacent to those public streets or pedestrian ways were really the ones that needed to have the 20% because you could have a zero lot line with one wall that was right up against another building. And so, you know, we had a little bit of a discussion about that just because, you know, looking at that facade, it, yeah, it does, you know, you have three windows on there, and even though the rest of the building, all that wraps around the whole thing is well above the 20%, you know, that's one side that's lacking. I think part of that is it's intended to be more of a service entrance for the restaurant. So, you know, certainly could have that conversation with the applicant, that's why they went in that direction, but I think that it was probably our opinion that that probably wouldn't apply just because it wasn't adjacent to a street or a pedestrian way, but the commission certainly could have a different interpretation.
When you're walking down, let's see, when you're walking down Hello Walk, though, you'll see that side?
You'd be walking down Sixth, so there's the parking, the parking lot would be on this side. Yeah, you would if you're going down Hello Walk at this angle.
You know, you're going to see it in...
Yeah, so you would, I guess you'd be...
If Hello Walk's extended, you know, you're going to see it pretty fully.
Extended here. You do have University Point that comes fairly close to this property line over here, and so you'll have that, and then you'll have the short space. So, there will be a, you know, there won't be a large view corridor when you're going eastbound on Sixth in order to view that. It would largely be blocked by the University Point building because that's, you know, about two and a half stories tall, and so, you know, it will be slightly hidden unless when you come into view from the sidewalk here, or just, you know, maybe coming down Hello Walk here, you catch, probably catch a glimpse of it there to the west. But, I think it was their intention for more of a service side entrance, but we could, commissions could certainly have that conversation.
And my other question really isn't about, it's about Hello Walk where it meets Sixth and Jackson, the bulbout. I guess the caution there would be that we aren't streamlining the ability of cars to just zip around and make a right turn. I know from many years of walking the campus every day, there's a real problem with the bulbouts in front of the old sub. You practically get your toes run over when you stand on that intersection because it's so curved around and it's so streamlined for cars to make quick turns, and it's a heavy pedestrian corridor, and here, this is going to be even bigger. So, it's, I'm not, looking at that, it doesn't really look like a bulbout, but maybe it is. You know, I guess I need to see enough of the rest of it to the east, but...
And we already have a similar radius on Sixth, so, you know, the curb line comes, then it heads, and you do have the designated right-hand turn, so, you know, it is your right to head right. You do have to pause here at the light before you hang a right. But, yeah, I mean, the major difference will be coming out onto Jackson Street, so it'll be similar to the improvements that are being done, or were done on EMSI, as well as the improvements on Larry Swanner's diner on Third and Jackson.
And I haven't walked either of those yet.
So, it'll be similar to that, yeah. You'll have that wide, you know, really wide sidewalk with the treatment with the trees, as well as the historic lighting fixtures. I think they just got those installed this last week on that property, so it'll be very similar to that. And then, also, you know, it wasn't shown extending, but the sidewalk will eventually head here to the south, and those improvements will be made. And then, there'll be parallel parking on the, would be the west side of Jackson, so, you know, that'll be the big one, is getting some parking on there, and I think ITD has been willing to allow that, to do the bulbout on Jackson, then have the parking there on the west side. So, I think that, you know, those aspects will help alleviate maybe that just blowing through the right-hand turn.
Joel?
Is your concern with people cutting the corner?
Yes. Cars. The smoother, you know, when you have those big smooth bulbs that don't stick out far enough, people just zip around them, and so defeats the purpose of having one.
Would it be possible to do the same thing that we've done on Friendship Square on Main Street? A few posts to keep, change the incentives of cutting the corner?
Well, they were, you know, we're looking at the ADA access there, and, you know, what you're going to have to do is, I think, have a ramp coming from either direction, so one coming down here and then one coming down here, and then it eventually creates this lip right on the edge of this circle, which is likely going to be some type of decorative brick wall that'll be two, three feet tall that it could serve as a bench as well as you're waiting, but it's probably going to be a curb and then, you know, because we're showing the gutter here, so this isn't rolled curb, this is all standard vertical curving. And then, there'll be a point right here where the pedestrian crossing is, where you'll actually be flush with the pavement, but, you know, that should help with, it's a lot harder to control when you have just a rolled curb that goes out into your crosswalk, and so, I think you'll probably have a less likelihood of that happening.
Other comments, questions?
What's the, you said the corridor, the Hello Walk in the corner there, that's the URA's responsibility?
Yeah, it's actually, the property line would be on the northern portion of that, and, yeah, the URA has indicated that they're planning on doing that improvement as part of this.
Would they do that along with this development, or would they...
Yeah, they would do it concurrently. I don't know if it'd be before or after, but it would be part of this development, yeah.
Since the, on the parking there on the west side, since that's required because of the residential uses, do they get to permit that so that only the residents can use it if they want to?
I think they'd be able to do whatever they want to do there, but I'd imagine they'd probably leave it open for the restaurant use and encourage their residents to have alternate means of transportation.
Is there a, I was looking at the guidelines and the ideas for ingress and egress from the whole development at some point, is there a possibility at some point that the parking lot between, behind the, University Point, as that was called, and this lot would be connected, or is that up to the property owners as they...
It's up to the property owners, and we were hoping that would be the case, you know, because it comes into a good intersection right here, and that's part of the reason I mentioned that this is likely going to change in some fashion. I think those property owners currently for the University Point have been unwilling to, you know, look at that cross-access, and I could see that once this development gets built, it may have a, less of a likelihood for that to happen in the future because you could see that, well, you know, maybe they just cut through, I don't see a parking spot here for the restaurant or the retail, and so I just cut, I have an easy access to cut through and park, and I think that they hold their parking behind University Point in a good, high regard, you know. I think they want to keep that enforced as much as possible over there is what is my understanding, so. But, yeah, that would be a lot better if we could work out some type, I mean, it comes into almost a perfect intersection right there, so it would have been nice to have some cross-access through there. So, if you can see, yeah, they have their travel lane that just ends right here, so it would be a perfect location to have that come in, and then eventually, you know, when the drive comes out. And so, this is, you know, right now, it's trying to work with three, four property owners as to how we're going to end up doing this, and, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge in order to figure that out, but I, you know, as far as this project, we shouldn't, it shouldn't have an issue with us moving forward with this one.
Joel?
Nice project.
Regarding the Hello Walk, is the reduced width a precedent that will follow through to the rest of the development, or is the original standard still in force?
Well, I don't know that it sets a precedent. I mean, you have such a, oh, it's a rectangular-shaped lot, but you end up, you know, creating these just oddly shaped lots, and I don't think that, looking at the bigger picture of where it goes through, you know, I don't think you're going to get that with other areas just because you're going to have, it's going to be more of breaking that block up into a couple of blocks with a pedestrian corridor in the middle. You know, if you look at this plan, there, it looks pretty big, you know, 24 feet is actually pretty wide.
It is.
They did have some constraints. You can see they have this sidewalk here that's actually, I think it was part of the University Point development, but portion of it's on this property, and so, there were some issues with getting, you know, the building footprint to fit there and not shifting it too far to the west. And so, you know, with the parking lot and the 24-foot drive aisle and the larger sidewalk here, there was, you know, they were starting to run into some constraints, and just that four feet may not seem like much, but it was going to, you know, acquire shifting of the building and some issues with it fitting on there. And so, I don't think it will. I think that all the rest of the properties are large enough that they should be able to accommodate this, and it'll be a nice feature because you'll be able to have other types of maybe retail or restaurant frontage on it, and it'd probably be an asset as you go, you know, further into the block there.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, I measured it out, and, I mean, the visual difference between 24 and 28 is pretty negligible, and I can see how where you've got two triangular pieces there that four feet can be important there, where it's not really going to be important, I don't think, on the other larger blocks.
I mean, it's hard to imagine the volume of pedestrian traffic that would fill up 24-foot corridor at this point.
Yeah, I mean, you still have 12...
It'd be great if it did, and bicycles, I guess.
And you still have 12 feet there in between the trees and, you know, 24 feet there, and so, you know, it's a pretty wide corridor.
How about utilities, Mike? Are they showing transformers?
Yeah, you've got a lot of the storm sewer, there's some utility lines, and they're engineers here, so we could talk a little bit more about that, but Avista's going to end up putting all the utilities that were overhead underground as part of this, so the utilities that are, I think, running along the south side of Sixth, those will, those will need to be, to go underground, and then water will come from, come from Sixth Street there to be tied into the building.
And, you know, it appeared from looking at the, all the elevations, et cetera, that everything is at grade entries. It's not like University Point where there's a separation anywhere between the sidewalk level and that awkward condition, quite frankly, that they created by doing that.
Well, the problem with that was, it was in the floodplain at the time, so they were required to elevate it two feet above.
Oh, I wasn't hunting, even, but...
So, that, you know, if, if that stream work had been done prior to that development, then we would have ended up with a development that's on grade.
So, we don't have that issue now and everything's more...
Yeah, since we've got the, I don't think the floodplain was ever on this property, but now that we've got, I mean, that was why it was so important to have that study done and all that stream work, just to get, you know, just for future development, a legacy as well, to get the floodplain retracted in that area, so.
Great. Other questions? Should we invite the, or do you have any more comments to make, or should we invite the applicants up to talk if you'd like and introduce yourselves and come up? Do you want to say anything, or?
Stand there, do you want us to stand there?
Pull a chair up?
You can pull a chair up. Yeah, we should have invited you earlier.
Just waiting for you guys.
Nice to meet you.
Probably have to say your address, just for the record.
Yeah, we have to have it all on formal...
Have a dress?
Yeah.
Mine is 1729 Lexington Avenue, here in town, Moscow, Idaho.
Mine is 112 South Roosevelt Street in Moscow, Idaho.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, can you advance the slide to the back part that you had some concerns about?
Yeah, I was going to mention that that spot is for a mural, so it's for a piece of art, so we have a different sort of plan for that side of the building just because too much texture, masonry, kind of competes with whatever piece of art goes there.
Also, putting windows in the apartments would have been too noisy for the garbage, traffic, et cetera.
Yeah. We also have a plan to do a sort of wood storage feature, so something kind of like what we have at the back of Myelina, but with a little bit more deliberate design, just because we'll have a wood-fired grill in Sangria, so that will also add interest and texture. And then, we put a window in the stairwell, which we felt would probably get the most use, and felt that natural daylight in that instance would be good, as well as in the hallway for the apartment corridor. But, yeah, the reason why it's left blank is because of the mural, so I want to put the old mural that was on the back of the ATP building, the maple one for the Renaissance Fair, bring that back, but I got to find a good picture of it and see who we might commission to do something. That's one of the contenders for ideas, but I missed it when they covered that up.
Yeah, we've lost a few over the years. There used to be a few at the, right at the intersection of Sweet, well, near, not, yeah, Sweet Avenue and 95. Remember, there were a couple of agricultural buildings that had murals all over them when we first moved here, anyway, yeah.
They've been reincarnators, a shed in my backyard.
Oh, you have, so they're still around, huh?
There was another, I made another couple of notes.
Is that all right? I just wanted to point to that right there. So, those awnings right there, actually, the trees are right in the way, so we were going to ask not to put those awnings up because they're actually right on top of the pathway, but there's trees...
The lamp posts in the trees.
There's lamp posts and trees right on that, and we put them because it's what's, you know, what in your design guidelines, but actually, yeah...
You can't walk under them, because the trees...
But you would never walk under them because there's going to be trees in the way, and there's going to be lamp posts in the way, and it's just, it really wouldn't serve any purpose.
Okay.
So, that was one that, in this project being already an expensive project, it's just an added expense that really...
It's a very nice-looking building, so...
And then, I made another note of something to mention. We don't really know what is going to happen with this property in the future regarding crease and any adjacent building owners, new people that purchased the Anderson lot, but we have always told Bill and I think both feel that we would be happy to collaborate with any sort of, like, shared use or, you know, working together to compromise on a space that would create a better flow through, from behind the University Point building to sort of integrate those parking lots. Like, we don't want to have a, we don't have an obstructionist, like, no, this is our land, and, you know, this is what works for us. We think that it would be good to create a situation where cars and people could better interact with the adjacent lots. So, we're, however that looks in the future, we are happy to work with the new owners or existing owners to do that.
I had a quick question. Did you guys run into any problems with that 50% window requirement? I mean, for the, I mean, did it seem like, was it a pain in any way?
In, there was a little bit, just because for us, we have a functional part of our main floor, which is the kitchen, and not that the kitchen shouldn't have natural daylight, and that was something that we wanted to do, but when you don't really have a solid wall to mount hoods or equipment or put your walk-in box for refrigeration, and it's all windows, it creates a situation, design-wise, where you have to form an island and hallways... windows, it creates a situation, design-wise, where you have to form an island and hallways to maintain around that island are a huge waste of space and/or creates awkward viewing from the street where they're looking at, you know, now we're thinking about how do we design our kitchen, not so much in the functionality of the kitchen, but to prevent a situation where a pedestrian is looking at our mop sink and things like that. So that was a little difficult for us. I don't know if it, if we were a retail space, maybe we wouldn't have the same problem. But they also have receiving doors that would be necessary. So maybe going forward, like, I always thought one thing that was really awkward at the police mall was that there, there were delivery and access doors on the face of the mall, not just on the back for the south tenants within the mall itself. And that always was weird because there's delivery trucks and you get these big blank spaces where there's a key door and it's just kind of uninviting. So I don't, I don't know. That's just a comment going forward. We kinda have to have a utility area and the best place that we felt was on the west side. Um, so it was a little bit of a challenge, but we just might have to frost one of the windows if it gets us into a weird spot where it's like, there's no bene-, people walking by and seeing the cooks, kinda cool, you know, exhibition situation, but other areas, it's like, you know, not that we have anything to hide, but it's like, you know, do you wanna see that? When, you know, it's like just weird. You know, a shelf of cleaning chemicals or something, it's just, I don't know.
Well, look, they're gutting the salmon.
Yeah, so it's like, I don't know, we might end up frosting one of those, but, or maybe just doing like a band and leaving it open from six feet up or something. But we, you know, it's a lot of windows. It's really expensive to do that. It was in line with our design, like our aesthetic vision that we were holding ourselves to. So in that sense, we didn't feel that it was too constraining. It's just, you know, it seems like everyone has expensive taste, including us. And, you know, can we pull it together to make that a reality? But I think that your guys' vision for the requirements from a design standard is good.
Yeah, you've got the, the, the challenge of two big pedestrian corridors on both sides of your building and that, on the length of them and-
Yeah, I know, I have this-
And it'll be wonderful for that experience, but it makes it tricky to find the blank wall to hide stuff behind.
I have a really cool art idea for a feature wall in the new restaurant, similar to the block wall at Myalina that we did. But there are no damn walls. It's all windows. Like, you're gonna have to build a wall. Not in the build a wall sense, but make a wall within our restaurant.
I mean, is that the sort of thing that there'd be a good enough loophole in the design guidelines that, you know, somebody presented that with, look, we need a spot for the mop sink, kind of stuff?
Well, certainly, yeah. I mean, like I said in the beginning, that, you know, they're, they're up for some deviations or they're, they're allowed that, you know, good justification from a developer, the commission could certainly, you know, approve those deviations. I know that they, they did have a blank wall, probably for the kitchen area on the Sixth Street area.
Yeah, it was like one of those.
Like those two right there.
And it was coming in below the 50% requirement. So with the second iteration, they had put windows in there in order to bring it up to about 50%. So they did make some modifications in order to, to bring themselves up to 50.
But it is a bit silly to put expensive windows in where we could have a wall just to frost the windows so that they can now be functional. You know, so, I mean, like, I don't know that it necessarily diminishes the design all that much. For example, having to cover one of these or even two of these windows in order to make it a more functional space.
Also, we'll have fluorescent lighting coming out, which is a enemy of mine. So if you want fluorescent light blaring out of the kitchen onto the walkway in the evening, that was another thing that was sort of bothersome to me about that, but, you know.
Well, it's a bit of a unique situation because they have a, you know, the way Hello Walk goes on the south and then Sixth Street on the north.
Yeah.
You know, you end up creating this space that, you know, the requirement just requires all these windows. And if you were to just think that Hello Walk wasn't behind them, well, they could obviously put the kitchen maybe at the rear and satisfy all those requirements. But they've got Hello Walk behind them, which requires that as well. So it becomes more of a challenge, you know, with this property.
Yeah.
I think this is unique to, you know, what you're gonna probably encounter with other development.
If you, if you took out those two windows you're talking about, what's, what's the length of blank wall you'd have there?
I, I think we're gonna be able to work with it. Um, so we're, I mean, we're not overly concerned, but for example, it's those two, see where that door is on the right-hand side on the bottom drawing? Imagine those two windows. We're blanked out. You know, for us, ideally, we wanna have a lot of window space because, I mean, we're gonna see guests next to it. You know, and people want that street view. It feels cool. It feels urban. It's kinda, kinda hip. But we also wanna make the building usable. And obviously, for us, it makes a lot of sense to have a lot of street frontage, especially if you have a restaurant plus a retail space. But, you know, the building's a little, a little wonky and we wanna be able to work with it.
Seems like for you guys going forward, 50% is great, 'cause like was mentioned earlier, if Hello Walk was just the back of the building-
Yeah.
That would be-
Good story.
Great, but, and easy to, to achieve. It's just hard for us, 'cause we're pinned between two pedestrian walkways. But I think-
It's lucky we went down from 85% where we started two years ago.
We had 65%.
Oh, was it? Okay, I knew it was up there.
Mike, looking at, looking at the standards that you sent us, it, it said these are guidelines. So we, as a commission, would be free to, to let them, let them do that, let them take the windows out, let them keep the awnings off the Hello Walk side if that were made sense.
Yeah, certainly. I, I think this is more than unique, so.
And guys, long-term, don't get us wrong, we're, you know, we're big believers in that sometimes, I mean, everybody's gonna come and hem and haw and complain, oh, you're gonna make it so expensive, nobody's gonna be able to build anything, you know. And then you end up with stuff that you're stuck with, in the city you're stuck with for, you know, our, our lives, like the rest of our lives. So it's not bad to have a design standards like that, but, you know, in a unique project like this, it can be a little bit tough. I mean, but we just had to get creative and, you know, we'll, we'll work it out.
I was curious about Greg's comment from earlier concerning parking, whether you're going, whether you intend to reserve those spots for tenants or keep it open for-
Reserve for tenants.
Reserve for tenants?
There's, there's few spots as it is. You know, we're gonna, it's gonna be one per unit, pretty much. Um, and, you know, people say, well, there's not enough parking downtown. And, I mean, Myalina, which seats a substantial amount of people, that doesn't ever seem to have any impact on busy weekends. You know, our farmer's market is very, very well-attended and you pretty much wipe out and quite a bit of parking by taking up Main Street. And still, it's like, I think we have the best farmer's market in the state. You know, maybe in the north, it's the best attended in the northwest, I believe. So-
Does it impact, just out of curiosity, 'cause I hear complaints about parking downtown all the time. Does, does it impact your business on Saturday at Myalina with the farmer's market closing out all-
Not even, yeah, not even.
You know, I think you can walk with some hungrier, so.
People, they just like, they complain about parking. We've had reviews at Sangria about complaining about parking. We're in asphalt ocean. And they still complain about parking, so.
I mean, somebody will park over by Winko and walk to Sangria, but yet they can't park by Casa and walk to Myalina, you know, and you'll get a review with like, oh, parking's terrible. And it's like-
Or even after a little bit.
It's like a quarter of the walk.
On the grid, yeah.
Yeah. With your apartments, I'm just kinda curious what kind of demographic you're looking to attract, whether you're looking for students or maybe graduate students or just single professionals beginning, or just kinda who do you imagine renting out those units?
Ideally, we'd like to see a diverse clientele. Um, the floor plan will sort of dictate it to some degree, just because it'll have room for a bedroom, and that bedroom has no wall. It's just got a railing that overlooks the windows. And so it will probably just be a single person or a couple. You know, maybe, I can't really see it being anything other than those two scenarios. And so within that, it could be, we would have, be happy for it to be anybody, I think. We like the idea of being, of there being a diverse clientele.
And the deck area of the building, do you plan on using that for restaurant use or tenant use?
Um, right now it's planned for restaurant use. In past designs, we have toyed around with the idea of having a space that was just for the residents of the building, but it's just the cost associated with making a whole nother space up above the roof with another elevator stop to the highest part of the building is an additional $100,000 to bring the elevator and finish out a space for the tenants. So, um, we feel like the property in that sense will probably be mostly for the restaurant, but we are not opposed to create, maybe creating like a small little space for the tenants to have on the rooftop. But, you know, finishing out a whole additional space for them, it was just not in the budget.
I mean, they're certainly welcome to use it, but what we're looking at long-term is that who is ultimately responsible for the maintenance of that? Because if it's, what we don't want it to turn into is if it's a tenant space or you set aside tenant space, it'll get dilapid, might get dilapidated, you know, if it's not being taken care of. Whereas a restaurant always has an incentive to keep stuff looking nice. You know, like the patio at Myalina is certainly a lot cleaner and more polished than the patio at my house because it gets used all the time. Those tables are wiped all the time. It's swept every single day. It's, you know, they'll wipe down the tables. I mean, everything's kept tip-top, in tip-top shape. I don't think that that would happen if it was just the exclusive use of the tenants. And I don't know any landlord that would police that space daily, myself and Carly included, but I know that as restaurant owners and managers, we would ensure that that was getting dealt with every single day, so.
Awesome. Greg, uh, were you, no, you're not asking anything now. Okay. Anybody else? Questions?
I guess I would just say that, so this is, this is the first run-through. I mean, I would, I would be able to vote for this even if you pulled those two windows and-
And the awnings on the other side, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see any, any problem with that. This is a, you know, it's a unique enough situation that I'm not worried about it setting any particular precedent or anything.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of window space along there. And if, that's not that big a stretch if you take out those two windows where you're walking along, along bike wall, especially the lights and the trees out there and-
And maybe it's an opportunity for more public art.
Yeah.
If you inset those two windows, if you took them out and inset and created murals there or something that, you know, create that continuity and integrate art.
And I can assure you, you know, anytime Carly gets involved, it's, and you do something like save money on the windows, she'll take that as an opportunity to spend it.
Yeah, I'm spending my money on it.
You're gonna end up with something that is gonna be very, very nice and very, very functional, probably way more nice than it needs to be.
Hence our daily blowout.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, we moved the elevator shaft to the back of the building, actually, to attend to some of the window issues on Sixth Street because it's an elevator shaft, so it was kind of causing that same problem. So we switched it to the back to help sort of distribute the load.
Even there, you, you've broken up the blank space with something in there, so it's just not, not just a blank wall, so it looks good.
But that's where your design standards, I think, are really good, because it forces us to have to like, okay, elevator shaft. 'Cause I mean, you would've had what you see up at the very top on Main Street, and that's not as attractive. I mean, on Main Street, on Sixth Street. You know, moving to the other side, it's like, oh, okay, we gotta think a little bit outside the box, shift it. But, I mean, it actually ended up being a better, a better spot for it, so.
So procedural question again. Is this, this is just a discussion recommendation meeting? We don't do anything, or is this-
No, you'll, you'll actually, yeah.
We need to vote on one, two, or three?
Yeah, approve with, uh, you, so you'd recommend, or you'd approve with those two conditions, if that's the way you wanted to go. And then they would make those changes and then come back for a final review. And then if those were satisfactory, then you'd grant final approval for the project.
So we could approve with the option of having them explore making those changes, but not mandating that they change them if they decide it doesn't work or doesn't look good or whatever?
Sure.
I mean, it's, yeah, I don't think you can just simply take windows out and have a building look good. I'm saying that as an architect. I mean, I think you have to think about it and, and adapt to that change.
So we have approval subject to required modifications or conditions, so that, that would be the-
Right.
But then again, I'm fairly impressed of what you guys have been able to do with our design guidelines. Once again, this is the first major project that is occurring out, Legacy Crossing, and your attitude and what you have done so far, I am-
Yeah, it's a very handsome building.
Very impressed. And I wanna make sure that, as a commission, that we are willing as much to work with you as you have obviously worked with us.
So I guess what I was getting at is offering some flexibility to address those two issues that you're talking about, without saying definitively, well, you can take this window out and that window out, seeing kind of what works with that as you move to the next stage.
Yeah, can we word that in there, that it's optional to take out these two windows, optional to take out the awning, and then leave it up to you guys if it works out or not?
Okay, does somebody wanna word a motion?
I would move that we approve the, approve the design with modifications where they may take out those two windows and may remove the awnings along the Hello Walk there.
Is there a second?
Does that cover it?
I second.
Okay. Brock, Brock or Kurt, you can, they did it simultaneously.
Which one of us do you like?
I don't know which one went first, but I, I saw Brock first.
Me is a good word.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Well, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, that, next item on the agenda is the Harvest Hills final plat.
Oh, just leave it.
Just leave it?
Yeah. Yeah, like a table or-
Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Thanks for being on the committee.
All right, so this is the Harvest Hills final plat. And this was, just to remind everybody, about a seven-acre property on the east side of Mountain View. This would be Third Street. We've got Paradise Creek going through that area. This is Mountain View, heading north-south, rolling hills, surrounded primarily by residential, single-family development. Just to go through what occurred up to this point, so in July 22nd of 2015, the commission conducted a public hearing. And at the time, it was a request from Phil Rengens for a comp plan designation. So they were requesting a change with the comp plan from neighborhood conservation to a couple designations, auto-urban, residential, and suburban commercial, and as well as a zone change from R2 to a combination of R3 and then a neighborhood business parcel as well. And then they had a subdivision plat, a preliminary plat with Harvest Hills addition as a plat. The commission deliberated and ended up recommending denial of their request, mainly because of the comp plan designation change and the zoning designation. So they had some twin home lots on there, and so the commission automatically had to deny, recommend denial of the subdivision plat in this case. And so, commission recommended denial. And then on January 11th, the applicant requested to advance on to city council. Anytime there's a denial recommendation, in order for it to advance, the applicant needs to make the request to advance. And so that's what that, that's what happened in this case. And then February 1st of 2016, the council conducted a public hearing and ended up approving the comp plan designation and rezoned of the property and then tabled the Harvest Hills preliminary plat after there was quite a bit of discussion on parking, 'cause Third Street was a collector, which had bike lanes and didn't have any on-street parking as part of that. And so the, there was quite a bit of discussion as to concerns with the lack of parking in the, on-street parking in the area and- And they ended up tabling that item. And then April 18th of 2017, council approved the plat, actually, I should say 2016 with three conditions.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we haven't happened yet.
The first condition was that the wide Third Street from 70 feet to 80 feet near the intersection of Mountain View Road, and this was in order to accommodate a left-hand turn lane and then enter into a new MOU and development agreement. And this was in regards to Jansen Street. And so Jansen Street, which was part of, I believe, the Damon or Moser additions to the north, was uncompleted. And there was an existing MOU and development agreement that required the developer of this project or this property in order to construct Jansen Street and connect to the other subdivision. The council agreed to defer that until a future phase of this subdivision. And so we would just need to go through and amend those agreements, and that'll happen at the council stage. So when this advances onto council, there'll also be a MOU and a development agreement that'll accompany that. And then the last condition was the applicant provide nine on-street parking spaces on Third Street. So this was the final plat that was submitted. You can see, these are, you have a number of twin home lots here on the south side, then a few, six of them here on the north side of Third Street. And this is about a 2.2 acre neighborhood business parcel. You can see how it relates to the, the conditions. So at this point here, they've ended up widening the 70-foot right-of-way, which continues up Third Street. And so that's widened here and it winds out to an 80-foot right-of-way to accommodate the left-hand turn lane onto Mountain View. So satisfied that condition. And then they provided what the construction drawings are gonna look like, just to have evidence that we are able to have the nine on-street parking spaces on Third Street. So that's what they've shown here. So you can see the turn lane that's incorporated into the intersection as well as the nine on-street parking spaces on the north side. And they had to put them in this location mainly because as, as you get closer to the intersection, it gets problematic with site distances. And then you can't put them in front of the twin homes because there's driveways that come off of the twin homes. And so really, this is about the only location they could place those on this property. So that's where they placed them. So with that, staffs reviewed the final plat for conformance and found it to be meeting all city and state code requirements and recommend, commission forward a recommendation approval on the city council.
Open for questions, discussion? I remember what the concerns were. We had a whole room full of people complaining because, you know, the guy with the lot with five new subdivided townhome lots against his one, you know, lot, et cetera, and some of those. And the decision's been made, so it looks like it's in conformance to me. That, that was the problem. There was a lot of pushback from people in the, in the existing subdivision who felt it was of a character that they hadn't bought into when they bought their R1 properties.
Yeah, that and we had a comp plan designation that wasn't really appropriate because, you know, it was placed on the property at the time. We thought when Fall Hills was platted and they never recorded the final plat, so that became null and void. And so we had a designation on there that was meant to recognize the existing development, and there was no development all of a sudden. So that was part of the issue was that designation. So be the nice thing about going through and updating our land use designations as part of the comp plan update.
How far up above this is the Jansen Street alignment? I don't see it on any of the maps.
It comes in pretty far over here.
Okay, so it's a long way up.
Yeah, it's, I would say right about there.
Okay.
So this is Third, we're just gonna extend Third and go up there and that's where the parking? On this map, where's, where's the parking?
Yeah, Third Street will end up being extended and over, and so it's almost outlined in the center. The parking will be right here, almost in the center of the property. So there'll be six lots right here, and then there'll be the large neighborhood business parcel there. And then they'll be pretty much centralized in this phase of the subdivision.
Access to the neighborhood business will be off of Third Street?
Will be off of Third Street.
Nothing out of, off of Mountain View?
No.
No, okay.
Isn't there a pretty good slope from up at Harvest Drive?
And that was part of the issue, is that lots, as single-family lots, weren't really economical to develop along that Third Street corridor because it's down in the dip and was more appropriate properly for multi-family, I mean, not dense, more densely spaced housing.
Mike, I'm not up to speed on what the city council talked about, but those, the nine off-street spaces there where they've got the cutout, does that mean there won't be any off-street parking on the rest of the street?
Yeah, there, there won't be any on-street parking because there's bike lanes on both sides. And so in order to have on-street parking, then the roadway needed to be widened and those, you know, bulb outs needed to be, or bulb ins, I guess, needed to be created for the parallel parking.
Cool. Okay.
Sean, did you have anything you wanted to add from what council?
No, you guys have, you guys have covered it pretty well. And there was, as I remember, we had quite a discussion about the parking. And then we also had quite a discussion about the entrance to the neighborhood business area and trying to get in some of these things without mashing them all together. And that, that's kinda what we came up with. And then there was quite a bit of discussion also about the, the bike lanes and the, more of the sidewalks and keeping the sidewalks available and open with only a small.
Kerb cut?
Yeah, interruption. And that was pretty much, as I remember it, well, you know, as you do, we end up talking about a lot of stuff.
Right, right, right. You talk about more stuff than we do.
Mike, will, will there be a turnaround at the end of this?
Yeah, they'll likely need some type of, probably gravel temporary turnaround is usually what's required. You'll notice like at the end of Baker, right, it goes into Peterson's that's not developed yet. They had to put a big gravel turnaround right there. So yeah, for fire truck access, anytime you got a road that exceeds 150 feet, you gotta have some type of.
Then a Jersey barrier and a sign, this road will continue? Because we run into that where people see the Jersey barrier and they still come to us complaining when they wanna return, continue.
Some places do do that, you know? They'll put a barrier and then they'll say, this road will continue.
No, seriously. It gets people in the head, you know, in the mindset that this is not the, a finished product. So, yes, Joel.
As I remember it, and that was a long time ago, the part of the discussions that we had, it was this commission about this project related to Jansen and the severe grade on it and the, I think, bike lanes and so on on that. And I guess I'm, I'm wondering whether a memorandum of understanding would, would deal with that. As I remember it, there was concerns that the bike lane up, up Jansen was gonna be too steep for anybody to use up, uphill, heading north, I guess. I'm not sure what we ended up recommending, but.
I think it was just recommending use the, using the sidewalks. I think there's an issue with, it's gonna be pretty substantial retaining walls that are gonna be required. And so that was pushing, I think, the existing right-of-way narrower than what you typically have, you know, if you had bike lanes on the, on the street. I wanna say that it was intended to be provided via the sidewalk that it's gonna go on.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering whether the council should be reminded that, that that discussion did, did happen and that memorandum of understanding might, might address those issues.
Okay.
So a memo coming from who to who?
Well, basically from, between the council and.
The developer?
And the developer.
Okay.
Yeah, I can remind Les McDonald of that. So they'll be putting together that MOU. So I can remind him of that.
So any other concerns or comments, anybody? Does anybody wanna make a motion to, this is the final review on this particular plat?
Just make a motion that we sent to council?
Yes, that would be, that would be the appropriate motion, correct, Michael?
Yeah.
Yeah, just that we forwarded on.
Make the motion that we forwarded on the council then.
With the recommendation of a memorandum of, I mean, I'm editing your.
Yeah.
Just recommend approval and then we will, I can convey that.
Gotcha, okay. So you just wanna recommend.
Recommend approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Scott, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. All right, so moving on.
I have got an appointment tomorrow morning, first thing, with the doctor down at the hospital.
Oh, good luck with that, so.
Pardon me?
I said, good luck with that.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be fun. But I just want you to know, I'm not dissing you here, but.
No, Walter did, right?
Well, I'm kinda taking Walter's place and I probably didn't ask enough questions.
Okay.
Walter can ask questions better than I.
Well, thank you.
Anyway, thank you for allowing me to come in and sit down.
Yeah, thank you. For coming.
I will wander off.
Take care. All right, so we're on item eight, off-street parking standards ordinance final review.
Okay. I don't have a presentation, but just wanted to go through the off-street parking ordinance. So since last time, I think we had a couple changes. I think I covered the illustrations that we had inserted. So have the ones regarding the ADA stalls, the two types, van accessible and standard, and then the sign detail. This'll be really nice to be able to hand out to people. In fact, I think we've already given it out to a couple people that were asking for details as to ADA spaces. And so it's, it's nice to be able to, to give people what the requirements are and show them what they are instead of just saying, well, it needs to be eight wide by eight wide by 20 deep. So it, I think a picture.
Saves a thousand.
Yeah, exactly. So that's one change. There was another change at the very beginning. So on page two, we have the off-street parking loading requirements. This is the section as to where, when parking lots are required or parking spaces are required. And it goes through new structure or use, change of use, expansion or enlargement, other parking areas, alterations, maintenance. So it kinda lays the groundwork for all of those things. We had an issue recently with a board of adjustment meeting where they were interpreting this section to say that every use, even if it was maybe a change of use, so you have an existing building and a new use goes into it, well, we typically call that a change of use. That's why we have a change of use section. But they were interpreting it to say that that was a new use and that all the current parking requirements should be provided. So how we usually utilize this is, let's say you have a building that's up on that North Main corridor and Motor Business and all the parking is required, but it doesn't have any parking. It's built out to all the property lines. Well, if a new use goes into that existing building and it doesn't have an increase in the, the parking, so let's say there was a gym in there before and an office goes in there. Well, the office requires less parking than a gym does. And so they wouldn't be able to provide, they wouldn't need to retroactively go back and create spaces. In, in the event that there's an office in one of those locations and a gym goes in there, what we do is take the difference. So if, you know, an office required five and now a gym requires 10, we don't retroactively go back and make you put all 10 in. We just do the, the difference. So we'll go five. And so, you know, how they were interpreting this was to say that if you had a new use and it went into any existing building, then all of a sudden you had to provide whatever your current parking requirement was. And it becomes problematic because they need to bring it up to all the current standards. So let's say you have a development that is built last year, goes up to all of our current standards, all landscaping standards, but we adopt, you know, a different ordinance. So we adopt this ordinance and all of a sudden our, our landscape requirements increase and the width of those increase. Well, if a new use goes into that building, even though it's only a year old, that would mean that a new use goes in and they have to rip up the landscaping they put in a year ago to bring it all up to current standards. So that's really not, you know, the way we operate or our interpretation of this. You know, it, I think we wanna promote kind of this reuse and gentrification of properties and because it was, you know, a lot of them are built such a long time ago that, you know, you really run into issues with maybe the parking lot's not up to compliance, they don't have enough spaces. And this gives us the flexibility for, you know, allowing those uses to change and maybe the building gets improved because of that. So I think maybe the classic example is Rant and Rave's building. So Culligan was in there previously. That building's all the way out to all the property lines. It takes up the whole property. They sell it. Person wants to open up a restaurant brewery, they have no, you know, they have no parking. They don't own any of the lots. Culligan goes and builds a new building to the north of that. They have some parking and, but they won't lease it to that, that business. And so they're put in a situation where, you know, we take what was previously Culligan's requirement and then we look at what the brewery, restaurant would be. So I think that came out to be maybe seven spaces is what they needed to put in. They ended up leasing, city owns that Triangle, your Triangle parking lot to the south. So they ended up leasing some space from the city. They had some other options of going over to St. John's and building a parking lot on that site. But, you know, those are kinda the common scenarios that we run into is changes of use and the parking is, you know, oftentimes, you know, not up to current code. And so it gives us a ability to work with those people and allow the change of use and the improvements of the building. So what we've done is rewritten this in order to more or less clarify that. But we'd also thought we'd give a little bit more flexibility and throw in another 10%. So, you know, I think the middle of that sentence kinda states it well to say that, you know, 110% credit is given. So instead of 100% credit, you know, they give a little bit of flexibility. So say you had, you know, a, a use that required nine spaces, a use comes into that building, requires 10, they don't need to do anything to the parking lot. So it gives a little bit of leeway there and, you know, just allows us to work with them a little bit more than, you know, just a little bit of buffer between, that allows the change of, of use to happen. So that's what we've done is, that's why it's about double the size. We wanted to make it as clear as possible so we didn't run into any other issue with interpretation that we were putting new parking lots in every time there was a change of use. So, and then clarified the new structure use section to say that, you know, unless otherwise expressly stated, at the time a new structure is erected upon a parcel or a new use is established on a previously undeveloped parcel, off-street parking shall be provided in accordance with the provisions of this section. So, you know, I think they were interpreting it before to say, you know, a new use is established, well, they had put that in addition to a new structure. established, well, they had put that in addition to a new structure because you could have a new use that didn't have a structure. I mean, you could have an agricultural operation or, you know, some other use, a football field, you know, that didn't have any structures on it. So that's why they put that in there. So that's really the only change there is just clarifying that, clarifying that section and giving a little bit more flexibility with the 10%. And then other than that, I think that that's all we have. There are quite a few changes, you know, this has to be ran through the legal department and there's always some changes with grammatical things that were written under a prior code that are now needed to be, you know, changed to the correct grammar. So other than that, that's really the crux of any changes since the last time you saw it. And I have this scheduled for public hearing at our next meeting in April, so.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action tonight at all? We're just --
I like the way you added.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So any comments at all, questions to Mike? So next time we'll look at it in a public hearing setting. Yep, okay. Item nine, 2009 comprehensive plan updates, chapter three.
I need to take a break. Of course, so feel free to --
You know what, if we take like a five-minute break, I agree with you. We're doing the same thing.
Snow and raining or sunshine, so you don't know.
April's pushing everything.
Daffodils and snow, you know, it's a blues way. Okay, up and down.
You ready?
Yes, I guess we can resume. Okay, we're resuming and we're on item nine, 2009 comprehensive plan updates, chapter three.
Okay. I did get Les and the Transportation Commission's final recommendation on our thoroughfare plan. So, this is our kind of functional classification of roadways in town, whether they be national highways or arterio, minor arterials or collectors or local streets. We had the ring road concept in the current comp plan and I think from the multimodal study, we were going away from that, at least in the eastern quadrants and looking at a shift. So, I think that this was part of the work of the Transportation Commission was looking at alternate alignments using existing roads in those areas. So, this is the northeast quadrant. The black represents the ring road, I think, in its current form. And so, you know, looking at using some of these existing roads in order to get through and the dash lines would represent future roads, but the solid lines represent roads that are currently there. So, we essentially have that, a lot of that road network currently in place in order to provide that detour. So, that's what they recommend we adopt, so we'll be looking at mending that thoroughfare plan in order to follow those roadway alignments in the northeast and then the southeast. They had recommended just going down Palouse River Drive, so this would be the southern alignment. We'll have the highway realignment actually coming in around here on that eastern side. And so, what they would propose doing is using Palouse River Drive all the way down to, I believe it's Mill, maybe?
Mill?
Mill, sorry.
Mill.
It's Mill. I knew it was an M. They get all the way down to Mill and then heading north and connecting with Highway Eight. So, instead of the ring road in this area, that's what they would recommend be in place of that. So, we'd be amending, removing this, you know, the ring road lines and then using some of these existing, like Palouse River Drive is shown currently all the way over and then it'll eventually, I think, connect to Mill a little bit further air, so we'll just be amending those lines to show that, that alignment on the thoroughfare plan. And then, looking at the, this was as part of the multimodal study, we had looked at before, kind of the changes between what they had recommended. There were some oddities in this, like, I think this may have been an oversight or an error, they had a minor arterial and then this dash line through the university's property, which is slated to be an extension of the kind of big box commercial that's right behind the mall. They're showing that to be a collector, which is, you know, usually have a road continue through and just because this leg, you know, goes behind the mall doesn't mean it, it doesn't need to be an arterial as well. So, that was kind of odd, so we were looking at, you know, changing that. They had recommended Third Street, so this was a change from the current thoroughfare plan, they were recommending that become an arterial. And then Joseph Street, they were looking at that becoming an arterial and then the western portion of Palouse River Drive, they were looking at downsizing that or downclassifying that to a, to a collector. This was, I think, what Les had given me as, as far as last time the Transportation Commission had worked on the functional classifications and so this is what Public Works recommended going with as far as the classifications. Obviously, we'll look at revising the ring road in this area, but they don't have, a lot of the same requests from the multimodal, with the exception of this is shown as a minor arterial all the way through, so they have that dash line with minor arterial instead of a collector. Third Street's still shown as a minor arterial and then Palouse River Drive, I think, is, it's consistent with what the thoroughfare plan is, so that's showing that as a minor arterial as well. And so, those would be the recommendation, recommended changes coming from, I guess, Public Works and the Transportation Commission. So, I'll look at updating the thoroughfare plan as well as some of the last revisions to that chapter and then hopefully have that, those revisions by next meeting and then we can move on to chapter four. But, there are a number of revisions that we still need to get some data on as far as intersection, safety issues and traffic and bicycle mobility. So, hope to have all that at the next meeting.
Any other, any questions? Mike? All right, so, item 10, use table formatting, moving right along here.
So, if you recall, last time we did some formatting for the use table and it ended up, I guess I did start it. So, just looked at some formatting. What we had previously done before was looking something similar to that and so just played around with some solid lines and just making it a little more clear in order to read and navigate. We had reviewed some other jurisdictions that had them grouped by you, kind of category, use category, and so the commission wanted to look at doing that. And so, what I've done is gone through and I'll provide you with a hard copy next time, but gone through and organized it by category, really. So, starting off with residential, I think it, you know, I'm pretty happy with the way it turned out as far as the, you know, categorically listing all the different uses. And so, start out with dwellings in residential zones, dwellings in commercial. The big change is probably breaking out group living, you know, we have boarding houses, dorms, fraternity sororities, cooperative houses, and then accessory uses at the bottom. So, previously, we had all these intermingled, just alphabetical order, so it, I think it provides a good grouping. And then going on to non-residential uses, you know, go through kind of all the different categories, agricultural uses, amusement and recreation facilities, animal-related businesses, so your vet services, pet care services, doggy daycare would be covered under that, financial and tech, technology services, food and beverage service, manufacturing, public institutional uses, which pretty much, a lot of places had subcategories under public institutional uses, but I just kept those all in the same one. I mean, it really runs the gamut, you have communications facilities, typically daycares just because they're, you know, usually associated with educational, like schools are usually classified as public or institutional uses. And then, you know, all your public service, community centers, fairgrounds, government office buildings, hospitals, healthcare services, you know, all those are grouped underneath that category. And then retail personal services, self-storage, we've got temporary uses, a lot of vehicle and equipment related uses, and then visitor accommodations would be your hotels, motels, bed breakfast, RV parks and campgrounds. So, that's what I've done with the, you know, categorizing those and-
That's all. That's good, Mike.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's really nice, that light gray really helps because you could end up thinking you, you know, you were free sailing permitted and realize you're, I had skipped the line. So, it's really nice to have that.
So, you know, I think, well, I'll give you a copy of that next time and then we can go from there. I think there were, you know, this was helpful because there were a couple of uses that I think we didn't cover, you know, it helped identify some of those uses. One was, thought maybe, you know, some jurisdictions are starting, you know, doggy daycare, boarding has started, has started to become such a, kind of mainstream service that a lot of places are now just listing doggy daycare as a use and, or animal daycare. And, but that would be, so I thought that maybe we would need to add that since we do have a couple of those in town, but it's actually covered under pet care services. But, there was under beverage, food and beverage, so looking at reviewing that and IAX, they had all the different restaurant-type uses and bars, pubs, for drinking places, for, you know, the alcohol beverage use, but we didn't have a coffee espresso stand, so, you know, that would have been an oversight, so we caught that. And then, we had one in manufacturing, probably the most important one, beverage manufacturing. So, we had breweries, wineries and distilleries that wasn't, that wasn't covered by any of these manufacturing or food and beverage service uses. So, added that one in there and then I think that that, that was about it, so.
Great.
That's probably the nicest use table in the entire state.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty crisp.
Good work.
Pretty crisp.
Yeah, looked at them all, so I think, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job, Mike.
Yeah, you can, we can be the model code for everybody else.
I know.
Better win some kind of reward for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, before we adjourn, just one quick thing on shared reading discussion. Greg had suggested a couple of topics a few weeks, a few meetings ago about really pedestrianism and bicycle accommodation in comprehensive plans was one of them and the other was parking.
Parking, yeah.
So, so, there are a few suggested, sort of pretty brief articles. And I can just kind of go down the list and then I'll, we'll send them out to everybody and as an email, but they're, you know, they're all just a couple pages online, really, they're not super long. City Lab is the publisher of several of them. The first one is how urban designers can get smaller cities walking and that really looks at, that's a good commentary on our legacy crossing design guidelines, you know, just sort of showing them right there. And that's, you know, getting the pedestrian engaged and that's why I don't think we should give up too much personally on, you know, transparency, et cetera, along pedestrian priority quarters because people have the privilege of developing in that area and there's a reason that those design guidelines are there. And so, this one sort of illustrates some of that. The second is, what would bike-friendly auto parking reform look like? Seven ideas and it's really Bike Portland, the Bike Portland organization put it together, but then there's a drop-down list within it and you can hit Seattle and it's even better and it's, "Seattle's street parking vanishes as bus and bike lanes, boom." And that's a Seattle Times article that's connected to it. So, it kind of talks about this trade-off between on-street parking and bike lanes because we're looking at that with Third Street and others, so that might be a good one to look at. This one is out of the box. It's City Lab again, it's six places where cars, bikes and pedestrians all share the road as equals. And I've been in that situation in, in the Netherlands and it's like, where's the bike coming next when you're walking around? It's really scary. They all seem to know where, where you're gonna walk, but, you know, it's interesting. The Germans kind of outline those three categories within the same street corner, but not the Dutch, they just go everywhere. But, anyway, it's kind of an interest, it's sort of a fun alternative and it's. And then, the National Association of Realtors has an article called, "Find the Perfect Spot: Rethinking Required Parking," and that's another one, so. If those sound good to you, we can put them out there and if anybody else has anything they can dig up, that's what I've been able to find so far, that's not somebody's thesis, which I did find a few of those that looked interesting, but I thought you might kill me if I-
You're doing an excellent job.
So, we'll, we'll go for it. Nils Petersen gave me some help on a couple of those that, periodically he sends me stuff that, that I kind of keep in a folder and so, yeah. So, anything else is welcome to add. Okay, I guess, are we ready to adjourn?
I guess so.
Yeah. See you in two weeks.
Thanks.
Yeah.